And it's called to order, can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Erin O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Greg Strike, Jerry Gardner, and Jim Winchester are excused, you have a quorum, thank you.
Moving on to next item of business, disclosures. Commissioner Pulis.
Yes, I do have one disclosure. I was not yet seated on the commission when the conditional use case 2020-0097 was originally heard, but have listened to the audio and can participate.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Nothing.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Ron.
Yes Chair, similar to Commissioner Pulis, I was not yet seated on the commission when case 2020-0097 was originally heard, I have since listened to the audio and can participate.
And I would like to restate for disclosures that I do own property in Girdwood, it is a rental property, I was directed to participate at the last meeting and my circumstances have not changed since then. And that is for case, the first case, item G1 2020-0097. I will, unless there is a motion that would like me to recuse myself, I'll assume that the commission believes the same as last time. Seeing no motion, I will participate as directed. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, case G1, case 2020-0097, before we get into that, I'll read the public hearing procedure. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows: After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes, part of that time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, etc. will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. This must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we have the report?
Yes, thank you. On August 3rd, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a conditional use for case 2020-0097 to allow for the construction of a multifamily housing development with a density of six dwelling units per acre, so nine dwelling units on one and a half acres, within the GR1 district in Girdwood. The commission's findings and decision were adopted in September of 2020, however, following the adoption of the approval and findings, this case was appealed to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment heard the appeal in March of 2021, and the Board of Adjustment ordered a finding to be struck, a condition of approval to be added, and additional findings and reconsideration be given for traffic generation onto Sprout Road, and the feasibility of access to the project from either the Aliaska Highway or Gunny Sack Mine Road. So I'm here tonight to answer questions on behalf of the Planning Department. Please note, this is not a rehearing of the entire case, it's only a public hearing to address the deficiencies in the resolution granting the CUP that were directed by the Board of Adjustment. So I'll now summarize the specific deficiencies to be addressed in this public hearing, again as directed by the Board of Adjustment. So the Board of Adjustment finding number six is that the staff reported incorrectly identified the surrounding area west of the property as GR1 district. The Planning Department does not contest this finding. The correct zoning designation to the west of the subject property is GR2. The Board of Adjustment did note in their findings that this error did not factor into the decision of PZC, and this correction should just be noted by the commission. Board of Adjustment finding number 10 is that Planning and Zoning Commission finding A3 in the resolution was not supported by substantial evidence, and this finding should be struck. Finding A3 is the following: This new multifamily housing development will add nine new dwelling units within the Girdwood community, which will aid in reducing its shortage of housing options. The Planning Department does not contest this finding, this correction to remove finding A3 or debate it should be, or provide further evidence, should be noted by the commission. The Planning Department received a question from a commissioner if they could limit short-term rentals as a special limitation of the zoning. Just for the record, Title 21 does not specifically address short-term rentals, so enforcement of a special limitation related to short-term rentals would be difficult. Short-term rentals is a community-wide issue, it's more appropriately dealt through with Title 21, and it is not a special limitation to one property. So staff does not support imposing a special limitation related to short-term rentals. During the original public hearing for this case, there was discussion on rental uses allowed in the GR1 district, specifically a hotel. An inn and a small hostel could be placed on this parcel with a major site plan review, and a large hostel could be placed with a conditional use permit. The Board of Adjustment finding number 15, criteria six to issue a conditional use permit requires the proposed use be compatible with adjacent properties. The Board of Adjustment said in this finding that there was insufficient evidence to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's conclusion that the proposed use is compatible with allowed uses on adjacent properties with regards to traffic noise, dust, and related external impacts that may be related to traffic generation. Planning staff response to this is the applicant has included an analysis of anticipated vehicle trip generation, as well as impacts from dust and noise within their response for the commission's consideration. The Plating Board did approve a variance that allows the property owner to improve Sprout Road at a reduced standard using recycled asphalt rather than regular asphalt or new asphalt, but the Plating Board denied a variance that would remove other requirements for the road, including a requirement to construct a separated pathway, so the applicant still must construct a five-foot pathway on the developed side of Sprout Road. Comments provided by the Municipality of Anchorage Traffic Engineering concur with the anticipated trip generation calculations that were provided by the applicant. Sprout Road is classified as a Class 1C collector, and this type of road is intended to support between 2,000 and 10,000 daily vehicle trips. Thus, Sprout Road is able to support the anticipated increase in traffic generation given this classification. Board of Adjustment finding number 17 spoke to criteria number seven for issuing a conditional use permit. That requires adverse impacts be mitigated to the maximum extent feasible. The Board of Adjustment said there is insufficient evidence to conclude that direct access to the Aliaska Highway or Gunny Sack Road is not feasible as a mitigation measure. If access, let's see, actually, if access to Gunny Sack Road is feasible, Planning and Zoning Commission can take evidence on traffic impacts and make appropriate findings. Planning staff response is that the applicant included an analysis of the viability of connecting to the Aliaska Highway and Gunny Sack Road. Comments provided by the State of Alaska DOT state that there is no direct access to the Aliaska Highway that will be granted. Additional comments provided by municipal traffic engineering and private development are consistent with the determination that connecting to Gunny Sack Road is not feasible due to construction costs, including costs to lower the sewer line and costs to add fill to bring the road to an appropriate grade. So one more Board of Adjustment finding, that's number 18, and that is that the Planning and Zoning Commission shall include as a condition of approval the applicant's agreement to retain approximately 25% of the natural vegetation on site. The Board of Adjustment wrote it out specifically, they want this addition to read. The property shall maintain minimum natural vegetation coverage of at least 25%. The remaining areas disturbed by construction will be resurfaced with topsoil and revegetated per Anchorage Municipal Code. Total permeable surface, including natural vegetation, shall be 40% of the site. The Planning Department does not object to this condition of approval. It is the Planning Department's understanding that the property owner in their community meeting had indicated they planned to retain 25% of natural vegetation. In talking to the property owner's representative, there is still 25% of natural vegetation on site, this has not been field verified. We did receive a question from a commissioner of if, once this is field verified, if it's below 25%. In the event that it is below that 25%, the property owner would be required to revegetate to achieve the minimum 25% vegetation. Note that Chapter 9 of Title 21 requires a 20% natural vegetation to be retained for multifamily developments, so this requirement for 25% exceeds the standards and codes for multifamily development. Just another reminder that reconsideration of the entire case was not directed by the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment identified specific issues for the Planning and Zoning Commission in their finding, and please limit deliberation to these issues identified in the five findings for the Planning and Zoning Commission to address. The applicant is in the audience to answer questions. That is the end of my staff report.
Any questions for staff? I'll kick things off with a question. Just because I want to make sure that we have this process straight, I know with the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, they were not allowed to consider new evidence, just what was in their, in our staff packet presented to us. At this time, are we able to consider new evidence that was not in front of us at that
Ms. Bailey, you can consider things, new evidence related to only those issues brought up by the Board of Adjustment, not other things that may be testified to outside of those things. So only things related to the direction by the Board of Adjustment.
I guess for a more, thank you, that does answer the question. For a more concrete example regarding to Board of Adjustment's finding number 10, I know the staff does not disagree. However, would consideration of the June 25th Anchorage Daily News article, "Girdwood Housing Market Reaches Crisis Levels, Forcing Locals Out," could we use that as support to keep in that finding?
I believe so.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
Good evening, my name's Laquida Chmolowski, I'm the Land Use Planning Manager at Dow, and I'm here tonight representing MJ3 Development for the conditional use permit remand for the Powder Run Multifamily project. Yeah, I'm trying to get it. Hold. Okay, let's try this again, there we go. So as we, as staff mentioned, the project's located in Girdwood at the southwest corner of Gunny Sack and Aliaska Highway. It's a 1.5-acre parcel that's undeveloped in Zone GR1, which is Aliaska Mixed Residential. So a little bit more on the background, so this project actually started back in 2020 with a variance request for the upgrades to Sprout Road, so that we did not have to meet the full standards as outlined in the Girdwood Code for Collector Street. And we were granted the variance so that we have a 20-foot wrap surface with a five-foot wide separated pathway and two-foot wide gravel shoulders on either side. And it's important to note that this whole discussion about access to the site was really the basis for that variance and why we came forward with a variance for Sprout Road, because we did at that time look at access to Aliaska Highway and to Gunny Sack. And then on, in August, we came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we were granted the conditional use permit for nine three-bedroom units. And then, of course, it went back to the, it was appealed and went back to the Board of Adjustments, and then remanded back here tonight. So as staff mentioned, there were kind of three main topics, that findings of the Board of Adjustment, which was the vegetative coverage to be included as a conditions of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution Number 2020-025, finding A3, must be stricken, and then a further evaluation of the traffic generation and impacts. So just a little bit about the scale of the project, looking at the site features and why we believe it fits in with the surrounding character and development. So by code, and under a conditional use permit, we could have 12 dwelling units, that's the maximum. So we, as we went through the variance process and the conditional use permit process, we went to several LUC and GBOS board meetings trying to work with the community, and through that process, there was a lot of concern that we'd maximize the development. And so we actually reduced the development down to nine units, which is a 25% reduction from what is the maximum. We also originally were looking at three-story units, and now we're looking at two-story units to bring that height down. And then, the site slopes from Sprout down to Aliaska Highway, and when we laid out the site plan, we actually used those, the natural grade to set the buildings so they'd step down and not impact the adjacent neighbor's view shed. So we're really looking to utilize all those tools to come up with a development that was consistent with the surrounding development in the area, which is single-family homes and multifamily. So there's a lot of questions around traffic, and I think one of the concerns is that Girdwood has short-term rentals. And so although the intent of this is to provide multifamily units, that was a topic of discussion as we went through this process. So just to give you a little bit of background, I know some of you know how traffic is evaluated, but for those of you that don't, so traffic engineers look at trip generation based on different uses. And so the ITE Trip Generation Manual is used to look at the different uses and what trips are generated in the peak hour. And the reason we're worried about the peak hour is that is normally the, when you see the highest rates of traffic, and we look at the AM and the PM peak. And looking at those trip generations in the peak hour is standard practice across the US. So whether you're down south or somewhere in Alaska, that's how you go about evaluating And then along with that is, the municipality has a threshold of 100 trips in the peak hour as, when you have to do a traffic impact analysis to see if you have so much off-site, or so much impacts on the off-site traffic that you'd have to do mitigation. And that is also, again, a common threshold, whether you're in Anchorage, you know, in the, out in the borough, or even down south. So one of the questions that the Board of Adjustments had as they looked at this case was, they understood that we looked at the peak traffic, but what was the traffic across the day? And so because when they're doing traffic analysis, ITE doesn't provide trip generation for, throughout the day, they just provide it for the peak. But there are professional engineers that gather data that's available to the public that shows what that might look like across the day, and so that's what this graph represents. And it shows, the red line's the single-family home, and then there's apartments, townhomes, and hotels. And you can see that those peak hours, like in the AM and the PM, is your greatest number of trips, and then it, you know, goes down from there throughout the day. So as I mentioned, one of the concerns was if this was used as a vacation rental, how would that traffic impact look like compared to a multifamily use? So unfortunately, the ITE Trip Generation Manuels don't have a specific trip generation for short-term rentals, so we looked at all the different types of uses that would be similar. And along with that, and that's what this table represents, and along with that, we looked at the nine units that we're proposing, as well as five units, which is permitted by right use, to look at how many additional trips you're adding. So the worst-case scenario for nine units is you'd add nine additional trips in the peak hour for a single-family home. Any other uses, the trip numbers go down. So Dowell's traffic engineers determined the base traffic that's on Sprout Road today, so that we'd have a baseline, and they found that there was 20 trips in the peak hour. And they did that by looking at the developed parcels, along Sprout between Gunny Sack Mine Road and Monarch Mine Road, and then also the developed lots on Jewel Mine Road. So that's your, that's what's happening today in the peak hour. So then if you take the worst-case scenario of the nine additional trips, that gives you a total of 29 trips. So that is a 45% increase, but it's well below the 100 trips in the peak hour threshold, where we'd have to do a traffic impact analysis. And then if you look at the increase from five to nine units, it's four additional trips, which is a 20% increase. So as far as dust and noise, when the development's complete, all the areas will be stabilized either by buildings, paving, or by natural vegetation or topsoil and seed. As I mentioned before, Sprout Road adjacent to the property will be rap. And then noise, we expect that once the development is complete, that noise will be minimal and in short durations as people are coming and going from work during the week. And that, and the development is consistent with the surrounding area. And then as far as trash, we assume folks will collect their trash, and there is a transfer station located in Girdwood. And then site access, so as I mentioned before, we were granted a variance for Sprout, and then Aliaska Highway is DOT right-of-way, and they have indicated that they will not allow access to Aliaska Highway. And then Gunny Sack is MOA right-of-way, but it doesn't meet the longitudinal slope requirements as it's constructed today. And it would really require a complete reconstruction from Sprout to Aliaska Highway and lowering it six to 10 feet. And then with that, you'd also have to lower the sewer main that's located in Gunny Sack. And so we did a, what this plan and profile that you see up here shows what it, an option that you could do but still doesn't totally meet the municipal standards, so, and based on that, that cost estimates about a half a million dollars. To get the road upgraded completely to municipal standards would be approximately a million dollars. And the property's assessed at $213,000. So the cost of constructing Sprout Road to standard is just, far exceeds what can be handled by the project. And I'm not going to talk about this because I want to save the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you, you have 45 seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you, my question is, just if you could walk us through what was on that last slide, slide that you skipped.
So this was just addressing the condition of approval that the Board of Adjustments wants to add for clearing. So the owner has voluntarily indicated that they would keep 25% of the area of natural vegetation. And so not only does it exceed what is required for multifamily, which is 20%, it actually exceeds what's required by code for this zoning district. And the GR1 is exempted from any vegetation coverage standards, so they are exceeding both of those requirements.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Quinn?
Can you describe what rap is and the paving that you're going to do on Sprout?
Yeah, so, so right now rap is, or, whoops, Sprout is a combination of rap and gravel, and rap is recycled asphalt. So it's, let's see, let me think of how it's, to best describe it. It'd be similar to like a seal coat. So it's not, it's taking that gravel and, and, you know, putting a layer on it so it binds it together, so you don't have all that dust and stuff you normally would from a gravel road. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I see no other questions in the queue, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Just a reminder to state your name for the record, and let us know if you're here testifying on behalf of yourself or an organization. And you're going to need to turn on the microphone. There you go.
For the record, my name is Lee Ellis, I live at 243 Gunny Sack Mine Road. I wanted to bring up a couple Board of Adjustment findings today. Number one is finding number five, the Girdwood Area Plan is part of the Municipal Code and by virtue of it being included as an element of the comprehensive plan, which brings me to BOA finding number 20. There was an issue about affordability and whether the Planning and Zoning Board could identify affordability, because there was no metric stated in Chapter 21, or Title 21, Chapter 9. As someone who is also going through a conditional use permit right now, the burden of proof rests on you, the applicant, to prove that your property or your development meets the guidelines within the Girdwood Area Plan. So I'm bringing this forward to you today because I don't believe that this property meets with the Girdwood Area Plan, and I believe the Board of Adjustment had questions about that, and they were concerned about how this board would identify whether it does or doesn't. And I would say that if affordability is one metric, there is no way in the world of Girdwood, including this wonderful article by ADN recently, that this property could be considered community-based affordable housing. So I have objection as far as approving this permit because it does not meet the Girdwood Area Plan. Some other concerns that we have as a community revolve around Sprout. It keeps being described as a collector's street, but everyone in that neighborhood knows that it is not anywhere near the design standard of a collector's street. It is barely wide enough for two vehicles in the summertime, and not wide enough generally for two vehicles in the wintertime. We have urged the builder to consider four different conditions, one of them being connecting to Gunny Sack Mine Road as a way to better allow for ingress and egress out of the community. We have asked a developer to consider working with the local road and sewer district to see if we can help fix that road to make it safer for everyone, and they have declined. This developer keeps saying that they have worked 12 to nine units based on community input, but if you read the minutes of the GBOs and LUC meetings, there was no input asking them to do so. There were four conditions we asked for, and they continued to be denied. Also, as far as considering Gunny Sack Mine Road being developed to municipal standards, Sprout Road is not being developed to municipal standards. So if developing Gunny Sack means that we don't have to develop to municipal standards but improves the neighborhood, I think that's great, and we don't have to spend a million dollars to do so. As far as trip generation, Girdwood is a different community. I think ITE trip generation is fine, but the reality is, is that is a main road that connects to the sewer highway to the rest of the community. If that bridge on the Aliaska Highway were to become inoperable, that will be the route for people to exit Girdwood. So I'd ask you to consider that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify at this time?
Hello, my name is Mike Edgington.
Hello, my name is Mike Edgington. That's E-D-G-I-N-G-T-O-N. I'm co-chair of Girdwood Board of Supervisors and also chair of the Housing Working Group, although I am speaking on my own behalf today, so I'll try and do it quickly and do three minutes, not five. So I have four points I want to make, but I'll start on the first two. I actually have a supplemental printout which I can share at the end of the meeting, although it's sitting in the loose sack. The first thing is the Board of Adjustments recommended that voluntary conditions be added to the CUP. There were actually four voluntary conditions, which the applicant agreed during the local process. They're listed in the letter of objection that GBOS wrote initially and are included in your packet. One of those is maximum structure height, vegetative screening, the parking requirements, stormwater drain, and minimizing light pollution. I really, I think we would really much like if all of those were included in the CUP, not just the minimum vegetative buffer. Interestingly enough, in the applications that went through the local process, there were two aspects to vegetative buffer, both the 20% and a 20-foot screen with surrounding properties. That seemed to disappear when the formal application came into the PNC, which is intriguing. But again, through the local process, there were two conditions. My other main concern is the trip generation numbers which were presented earlier. They're predicated on the idea that each unit would be equivalent to a single hotel room. If you look at the short-term rental data, which is available for a number of different properties in Girdwood, properties of that size, that unit size typically are listed for sleeping eight or nine people, occasionally even 10. I think most of you would agree that a typical hotel room does not take eight or nine people, maybe 10. Other jurisdictions, when they require this traffic analysis, ask for a short-term rental property of three or more bedrooms to be treated as the equivalent number of hotel rooms. So a four-bedroom property would be a four hotel room, three-bedroom property would be three. If you use that analysis for this case, while I agree that it still falls very much short of the 100 trips per busy hour, it still more than doubles the numbers which were presented earlier this evening, and I would appreciate it again if that was acknowledged. Other quick points, since I have 40 seconds left, is the reason we're concerned about short-term rental is the applicants also built another four units of condo elsewhere in Girdwood, and none of those have become owner-occupied. They're all second homes. We believe several of them are being used for short-term rental properties, so the expectation is the same will happen here. And my final point is on affordable housing. It is a great ADN article on the housing problem in Girdwood. I'm quoted extensively. That's one of the reasons I think it's great. But if we look at the, quote, "affordable," at 100% of the median income for Girdwood, we'd be looking at properties around 400, 450,000 in the most conservative sense, and these are likely to be 50% or 80% higher than that. So this clearly does not meet any reasonable definition of affordable for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to testify at this time? Seeing no one in person in the assembly chambers, I believe we do have someone that will be calling on the phone line. Can we go ahead and call them?
Your call cannot be completed as dialed. Your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please consult your directory and... Your call cannot be completed as dialed. The digit zero or one is not required.
Good evening. Is this Alan Rosenthal?
Hello?
Good evening. Is this Alan Rosenthal?
This is.
Alan, hi. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your testimony in case 2020-0097. Are you testifying on behalf of yourself as an individual or a member of a group?
As an individual.
Great. You'll have three minutes to testify. If you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record, you may begin.
Yes, my name is Alan Rosenthal, and I'm the owner of US survey 3042 lot 4A, which is the acre and a half lot directly across Gunny Sack Mine Road from the subject property. I'd like to speak to three different points that were brought up at the Board of Adjustment. First thing was vegetation coverage. In my opinion, this lot has been clear-cut of all vegetation except for the setback requirement from the Aliaska Highway right-of-way. I'd like to ask that a minimum of 40% of the disturbed area be replaced with vegetation, including 20% of indigenous tree species. I agree with the staff requiring 40% permeable surface, including natural revegetation. Second point I'd like to cover is the Board of Adjustment has decided that this project cannot use solving the problem of the lack of housing in Girdwood as a reason for higher density for this project. I propose that the maximum density of housing units on this property before units per acre, this is much more consistent with the existing neighborhood and all the other properties in the area. My third point is Gunny Sack Mine Road is an unimproved access in this neighborhood. There should not be any ingress or egress allowed onto the unimproved access at Gunny Sack Mine Road. I am in agreement with the staff's response that the access on Gunny Sack Mine Road is not feasible. Furthermore, I believe that Sprout Road is also an unimproved and higher levels of traffic usage should not be allowed. This project should be held to four units per acre so that these unimproved roads are not overburdened with traffic. And that's my entire testimony at this time.
Thank you for your testimony. All right, at this time, we've heard from all members of the public wishing to testify on this issue. Turning back to the petitioner, you have 45 seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you. So I guess on the subject of affordable housing, we've never indicated that this is affordable housing by the definition as far as it relates to funding and those sorts of things. It is meant to help add housing to the market in Girdwood where it is needed. As we talk about Sprout Road, the variance was granted solely, one of the reasons it was granted was because of such the low volumes that are currently on Sprout Road and then what would be added by this development. And although I recognize that in the worst-case scenario, you could have 27 additional trips if every room in every unit was rented out, we found that this would be very unlikely and that each person would unlikely not have a vehicle, each, a separate vehicle.
Turning to the commission, do you have any questions for the petitioner? All right, then the public hearing is closed at this time. Thank everyone for their, thank you everyone for your testimony. Turning to the commission, what is the will of the body? And just because it appears that we may need a little help, turning to staff on this, trying to, this is our first time, at least my first time getting something back from the Board of Adjustment Appeals, my question would be, would it be better to draft a motion as to each Board of Adjustment finding? Or is there a way to handle this all in one motion? I think we're used to handling cases in one motion, and so I think that might be one of the reasons we're a little stuck here.
Through the chair, to the commission. I think you can do either. However, it might be cleanest to go through each item with a separate motion so that it's all on the record rather than making one motion and then adding findings. That would be my suggestion, but of course, it's up to the commission to decide.
Thank you. And just reminding the commission that we are only here to address Board of Adjustment finding number six, 10, 15, 17, and 18. Perhaps with that staff advisement, we have a little bit of a better idea of where to run through, and we can tackle them in order, or we could tackle them as planning and zoning Commissioner O'Quinn?
So I'll start with the easy one. In the matter of case number 2020-0097, I would move to amend the conditional use plan approval to include a condition that vegetation coverage be established at 20% of the site.
And just as a clarification, that I believe it was currently at 20% and there was, there was a request that it shall read at 25%.
Excuse me, I misspoke. 25%.
All right. A motion, I'm going to assume that that takes the language from page three of our staff packet and incorporates it. Moved by Commissioner O'Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Would anyone like to speak to that motion? I will go ahead and speak to that motion and state that both the, that the petitioner did agree with that. There was some concern from neighbors that perhaps the property was cleared and left less than 25% of natural vegetation remaining. After conferring with staff, we did hear that if that is the case, that they would have to, petitioner would have to take on the cost to ensure that there's still 25% of natural vegetation on the site. Would anyone else like to speak to that motion? Seeing no one else looking to speak to that motion, call for a vote. And that motion passes. There is still Board of Adjustment finding number six, 10, 15, and 17 left for us to I believe finding number six is fairly straightforward as it has been resolved by staff, and they have mentioned that it was an error. I see a motion by Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In case number 2020-097, with respect to BOA finding number six, I move that the commission amend its prior approval such that, change in language with respect to the GR-1 district according to staff's response on page two of the staff packet.
Motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Pelus. Is anyone wishing to speak on that item? I will speak on that item and say that the staff has identified and accepted that it was an error when they originally put that, and it has been, this will correct that previous misidentification. And that motion passes.
Point of clarification, Ms. Bailey, would you mind putting on the record what the error was and what the correct zoning district is, just to put it on the record? Thank you.
Yes, for the record, the correct zoning designation to the west of the subject property is GR-2, single-family to residential. I see a motion by Commissioner Spinelli.
In the matter of case 2020-0097, with regards to Board of Adjustment finding number 10, I will make the motion that we strike the previous finding 8.3 from Resolution 2020-025.
Motion by Commissioner Spinelli, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Would anyone like to speak to that motion? I will go ahead and speak to that motion. I was reading that finding, it says this new family, this new multiple-family housing development will add nine new dwelling units within Girdwood community. I would state that that is correct. And it also says which will aid in reducing its shortage of housing options. The Board of Adjustment Appeals said that there was not enough findings to show that there was a lack of housing options. And I would say that recent ADN articles, such as the one published on June 25th, has shown that there is a market crisis in Girdwood, and they're adding to that. Would aid in reducing in a shortage of housing options, anything helps as that goes. So I will not be voting in favor of this motion. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Seeing no one else speaking on this motion, call for a vote. And that motion fails. Would anyone else like to make a motion at this time? Commissioner O'Quinn?
I would like to move in the matter of case 2020-0097 that we amend our findings of fact that, that we've heard public testimony here tonight that indicates that there is a housing shortage in Girdwood and that, as Chair Bailey referenced, the ADN article and other anecdotal evidence that has been brought to light, that there is a housing shortage and that the addition of housing units via this project would aid in addressing that shortage.
Going to ask a clarification for that motion. It was, seemed to be a mix of findings and motions, so I'll let that stand as findings. But would you go ahead and restate your motion?
The motion is to amend the findings of fact in the original conditional use approval to acknowledge the housing shortage based on the evidence that was introduced tonight regarding the ADN article.
Commissioner O'Quinn, will you go ahead and press the move button on your screen? It has been moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. I'll ask if any, I'll go ahead and remind people Commissioner O'Quinn also spoke findings on this. I wanted to ask a question for staff. Are the other things that we have said, for example, in our last motion, which was denied, and we stated that... denied, and we stated that findings which denied that, that would then go into the record, correct? So we would not have to state, we wouldn't have to amend the findings of our previous resolution?
That's correct.
All right, then I'll just say I'm going to vote against this motion, because I don't think we need it. Anyone else wishing to speak to this motion at this time? All right, call for a vote. And that motion does not pass. Looking to our staff packet, I believe we still need to address the Board of Adjustment Appeals finding number 15, number 17, and number 18. Sorry, that's just number 15 and number 17. We've already addressed number 18, 10, and 6. Commissioner Krishna?
Sure, in the matter of case 2020-0097, in regards to Board of Adjustments finding number 15, I would like to make a motion amending our findings to show that new evidence has been received to support PCC's conclusion that the use is compatible with the allowed uses on adjacent properties, and we can include the information that, from staff response on page two.
Motion by Commissioner Krishna, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Polis?
Yeah, I'll just say that I intend to support the motion, because while I acknowledge that local residents disapprove of the density of the site, the proposed site does meet the intent of the GR1, which is, the intent of this district is continue the existing pattern of development as dwelling units are constructed on the remaining undeveloped lots, and to permit development of hostels, inns, and multiple-family housing. I acknowledge the concern of the connection to the Aliaska Highway, or a connection to Gunny Sack, but based on some experience I have in my professional career, it would seem that the connection to the Sprout Road is the safest access point, given all considerations that have been discussed. Additional discussions regarding transportation was fired, nobody had any complaints about that, including the fire department. I see that, you know, that the site was cleared, but it looks like there are buffers still around on the local roads, and I just intend to support the project, because I don't think there is a big traffic safety issue there.
Commissioner Krishna?
Sure, I'd also like to make some additional findings, that we have seen the analysis of vehicle trip generation, which I believe is new evidence, and that was supported by traffic engineering.
Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. And that motion passes. Turning to the Commission, we have one last item by the, which is their finding number 17.
Point of order, Ms. Bailey, going back to the board's finding on Board of Adjustment finding number 10, I believe I misunderstood your question, and I would like to recommend that even though the Commission put on the record and mentions the ADN article, that you actually take a vote on amending the finding from the previous hearing to essentially substantiate the support of the conditional use permit by referencing that ADN article. So my apologies, I misunderstood your question. That would be my recommendation, of course, it's up to you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
All right, so we still have finding number 17 to address, and it's up to the Commission if they want to readdress finding number 10. Backward progress. Commissioner Oakwin?
So I'm going to just address finding number 10 once again, the purpose being, you know, we've heard testimony here tonight that the, there's a housing shortage in Girdwood from both Commissioner Bailey and some of the public testimony, and so I'd like to propose that we, I'd like to move that we amend the conditional, original conditional use approval to include a finding that there is a housing shortage in Girdwood, as evidenced by the testimony, and that ADN article previously referenced, in order to substantiate our finding at that, at that previous hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Oakwin. If you can please click the move button, there's a motion in our queue, looking for a second. Seconded by Commissioner Krishna, would anyone else like to speak to the motion outside of Commissioner Oakwin? Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners. While I can appreciate the need for us to, as we're doing here tonight, clean up some of our language and readdress some of the issues as brought forward by the Board of Adjustments, I don't find that substantial evidence has been presented with respect to this particular issue. Chair Bailey, I appreciate your reference to the ADN article. I don't dispute that there is an ongoing discussion around the status of housing in Girdwood. With respect to this particular application and the petitioner's work on the issue, I don't feel that I've heard tonight anything that would amount to substantial evidence on the topic, and therefore don't intend to support the motion on the floor.
Commissioner Spinelli?
I think I might have to follow Commissioner Ron, just because we've already gotten into trouble with this one, and I might just think we might just be better off leaving it alone.
And I intend to vote no, because I believe it is a moot point, and we already addressed finding number 10 to the standard of which I felt we needed to deal with it. Call for a vote. And that motion does not pass. We still have to deal with finding number 17. Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, in the matter of case 2020-0097, regarding Board of Adjustment finding number 17, which states there is insufficient evidence to conclude that direct access to Aliaska Highway or Gunny Sack Road is not feasible, I believe that with the additional information we received from the petitioner, additional comments from DOT and the MOA Traffic Department regarding access to either Aliaska Highway or Gunny Sack Road, and then the testimony from the neighbor agreeing that access to Gunny Sack Road was not recommended, I will just move that this has been, that sufficient evidence has been presented.
All right, a move that sufficient evidence has been presented to conclude that direct access to the Aliaska Highway or Gunny Sack Road is not feasible. Motion by Commissioner Spinelli, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Commissioner Spinelli, I believe you already stated your findings to this matter, would you like to follow up, or would anyone else like to speak at this moment? Commissioner Krishna?
Sure, I'll add some additional notes for the record. We have written comments provided by DOT stating that direct access is not possible to the Aliaska Highway, and we have information presented by the petitioner showing that access to Gunny Sack Road is not feasible, and we heard mixed testimony today as to whether Gunny Sack Road was a preferred option.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. And that motion passes. And with that, we have addressed all the BOA items that they brought up for us to resolve, and turning to staff, I believe that that means that the case passes, as it did before, with the amendments that we just made, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and we will receive that resolution, I'm guessing, at one of our future meetings.
That was correct.
Thank you. All right, that concludes case 2020-0097. Moving on to case 2021-0087. Staff, can we hear the report?
Yes, just a minute, I'm switching over my notes. Okay, case 2021-0087 is a request for a rezone. Cook Inlet Tribal Council, or CITC, requests to amend the zoning map for two parcels covering approximately 6.64 acres of land, from light industrial with special limitations, or I-1SL, and residential office with special limitations, or ROSL, to the general business district, or B3. The Tsar Alexander tract, which is the northernmost of these two parcels that are adjacent to each other, so the one to the north is the current location of the CITC Early Head Start Learning Center. The building was converted to a childcare center in 2015 from a vacant building that was formerly used as a restaurant. This parcel is approximately 1.47 acres in size, and the entire parcel is zoned I-1SL district. The parcel to the south is Wicker Sham Tract One. This parcel is vacant land. It was used for storing empty commercial disposal containers. These have been removed from the site with the pending new development. Phase one environmental site assessment found that there is no indication of contamination. This parcel is approximately 5.18 acres in size. It is split-zoned, with most of the parcel is also zoned I-1SL, however, the southernmost section is zoned ROSL. The special limitations applying to these parcels were created in the 1980s, and they are no longer necessary. Childcare is not allowed within the I-1 district in Title 21, as it reads today, however, CITC has a conditional use permit for a childcare center following old Title 21. A rezone of this parcel to the B3 district would negate the need for a conditional use permit, because the B3 district allows childcare as a permitted use. A childcare center within the B3 district would still be subject to the use-specific standards for a childcare center. There are nine criteria that, oh, actually, first I'll go through comments. Sorry about that. Okay. These parcels were identified for a targeted area rezone in the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan that was adopted in 2017. Just as a background note, the Assembly waived the zoning map amendment application fee for this case to encourage the continuation and redevelopment of these parcels that are located within an identified priority targeted area rezone area with the Assembly, with an Assembly ordinance in July of this year. For community comments, the Airport Heights Community Council submitted a resolution supporting this rezone. No other public comments have been received. Reviewing agency comments were all of non-objection. There are nine approval criteria that the Commission must consider in evaluating a rezone application. I'll go through those briefly from my staff report. The first is that the rezone is in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage and promotes public health, safety, and general welfare. This criterion is met. The rezone will promote public health, safety, and welfare. The existing CITC Early Head Start Learning Center serves income-qualifying households. The Penland Mobile Home Park is to the west of the petitioning parcels, and Fairview, Mountainview, and Russian Jack neighborhoods are nearby. The conditional use permit that was granted in 2015 for the childcare center mentions a recognized lack of childcare services in Anchorage, and that childcare for infants and toddlers is the most expensive form of childcare, and that the socioeconomic demographics of the surrounding neighborhoods make this site ideal for a subsidized childcare facility. The 1980s Assembly ordinances that put the existing zoning in place with the special limitations were to accommodate the development of a business park. Many surrounding developments were also built in the 1980s. This followed national building trends at the time for single-purpose business parks. More recently, there has been a shift towards more mixed-use spaces for the offices. At the time, it was also stated that there was not a lack of land available for residential housing. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, but the Assembly approved the original zoning because of the special limitations, however, the rezone would negate the need for those, since this would move it from an industrial to a commercial district that would not allow many of the uses that are within the special limitation. Two, the rezone complies with and conforms to the comprehensive plan. This criterion is met. The rezone is consistent with the designations within the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan and maps within the document. The land use plan classifies the petitioning parcels as a town center with transit-supportive development and growth-supporting features. Daycare centers, schools, and offices are listed among potential uses for the town center designation, and the B3 district is given as a suggested zoning district for the town center designation. Strategy six of the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan calls for targeted area rezoning, where the existing zoning does not align with the land use plan map designation. The petitioning site is one area that has been identified for targeted area rezoning, since the existing zoning is not in alignment with the land use designation of a town center. In addition, the rezone is consistent with goals and policies of applicable comprehensive plans, including the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, as well as the Anchorage 2020 Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2001. Criteria three is that the rezone is generally consistent with the zoning district purpose in the requested zone, and also with the purpose of Title 21. This criterion is met. The rezone is consistent with the purpose of the B3 district. The parcels are within an area designated as a town center. There is sufficient parking. Bus service and sidewalk access are available to the site. There is also landscaping requirement for childcare centers that would ensure that the rezone would be, or the use would be consistent with the rezone to B3. The rezone is also consistent with the purpose of Title 21. The proposed rezone will encourage a balance of non-residential land uses compatible with adjacent land uses, and provide access to affordable childcare for the surrounding neighborhoods. The infill development will also take advantage of efficient travel patterns and existing bus services. Criterion four is that the rezone is compatible with surrounding zoning and development, and protects areas designated for specific uses on the zoning map from incompatible land uses or development intensities. This criterion is met. The rezone is compatible with surrounding zoning districts and existing development. The B3 district is of a suitable development intensity for the area. Properties to the east and north are zoned I-1 district without any special limitations. And the B3 district is a compatible use adjacent to the I-1 district. This would create a north-south transect from industrial to B3 to residential office, moving from larger retail and industrial down to smaller-scale commercial development along DeBaron. along Debar Road. The trucks to the west are a multi-family zoning district. The requirement for L2 landscaping would ensure that there's a buffer between the childcare center use and the residential area. Criteria 5 is that facilities and services are capable of supporting the uses allowed by the zone or will be capable by the time development is complete. This criterion is met. Northway Drive and Glen Drive are adjacent to the parcels. Nearby Penland Parkway is classified as a commercial-industrial collector. There is sufficient vehicle access to the site. There's public water and sewer services. It's within police and fire service areas, building safety service areas, numerous other service areas of the municipality. There's also frequent bus service along Debar Road and Northway Drive. Criteria 6 is that the rezone is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon the natural environment. This criterion is met. The proposed rezone is unlikely to adversely impact the existing natural environment. The applicant is encouraged to retain as much mature vegetation as possible. The parcel is large enough to follow requirements of Title 21 and Title 23. The parcels do not fall within mapped wetlands, floodplain areas, or other areas with physical characteristics not conducive to development. Criteria 7 is that the proposed rezoning is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon adjacent land uses, or such impacts shall be mitigated. This criterion is met. While a rezone to the B3 district would no longer require a conditional use permit for a childcare center, CITC must still comply with the childcare use-specific standards, which will mitigate operational impacts. This would again require L2 buffer landscaping along the adjacent lot line to the residential district to the west. The special limitations in place do have a height restriction. The maximum height in the B3 district and RO district is 45 feet, which is consistent with one of the special limitations already in place to restrict height to four stories. The B3 district does have an option to increase the height of a building to 60 feet. However, that requires a site plan review, and an increase to 75 feet requires a conditional use. Criteria 8 of nine is that the rezone does not extend or exacerbate a land use pattern that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. This criterion is met. The petition site is designated as a town center, which is more consistent with the rezone to B3 than its existing zoning. This area is also identified as an area for a targeted rezone. Last criterion, nine, is that the rezoning shall not result in a split-zone lot. This rezone will not result in a split-zone lot, and it will resolve the existing split zone that is on the parcel at the south of the petitioning site. So the planning department finds that the approval criteria for a zoning map amendment is met. The planning department recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this rezone to the Assembly. Draft Assembly Ordinance is enclosed in the packet. Just a process reminder that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation on rezones, and then it goes before the Assembly for another public hearing before it is final. That is the end of my staff report, and I know the applicant is here to answer questions and provide additional information.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you through the chair, staff. I appreciate the thorough work done and presentation here tonight. I have a question about the language of the ordinance itself on page 15 of the staff packet. And clearly, I'm unfamiliar with the language in the last paragraph, but if you could just give a little more commentary about the private sector effects as stated in the ordinance, is that typical language that we would see in such an ordinance as this, or is that something specific to this particular case?
Yes, through the chair, Commissioner Ron, that is standard language without double-checking the exact requirement. I know that actions, it's a requirement by the Assembly for actions to be evaluated against their cost impacts. So that is standard language, saying that it's below the $30,000 threshold.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
Hello, Commissioners, and thank you for hearing our rezoning request today. Thank you as well to the planning and zoning staff for all the hard work in preparing the report in support of our application, which documents that all the requirements are met. I'm Lisa Rieger, the Chief Legal Officer at Cook Inlet Tribal Council, CITC, where I've had the privilege and honor to serve for the last 16 years. With me today is Peta Benz, our consultant who is working with us on this development project. Our vision is that we envision a future in which all of our people, especially our youth, stewards of our future, have access to vast opportunities and have the ability, confidence, and courage to advance and achieve their goals infused with an unshakable belief in our endless potential. CITC and its family of organizations provides comprehensive wraparound social services for over 12,000 Alaska Native and American Indian people in the Anchorage area, as well as other citizens, and in five main areas: in employment and training, child and family services, recovery services, reentry and victim services, and early childhood and education. In each area, we offer a full continuum of care to meet people where they are so that they can help themselves to go where they want to go and meet their full potential. So for example, in employment and training, we are meeting people from cash assistance and temporary to needy families, all the way to career ladders and job training in the health professions. And for each of our areas, it's the same. I'm not going to go through those unless you have questions. But in particular, and relevant to this request, our early head start childcare program is part of a continuum in our education services, so from actually prenatal all the way through high school, and it is a foundation for all of our other programs. So the program that we opened in 2015 serves as a cornerstone, supporting our parents and families in their employment efforts, as well as increased access to our services. Like our other programs, these wraparound services support whole families, and so the children come for childcare, but they also are getting their health exams, their families are getting needed supports, and in the time of the pandemic, they received a lot of both supplemental programs, as well as food and other items that they needed in order to make it through this time. Since opening in 2015, we have seen increasing unfilled demand for childcare, and we have learned, as has the rest of the country in the wake of the pandemic, that affordable, high-quality childcare is essential to return people to work. So when the property next door to ours opened and became available, we purchased it in order to respond to this increased demand. For your reference, the area maps are on page 20 and 21 of your packets. Our proposed development would allow CITC to fully utilize one-time pandemic funds to expand available childcare, create additional parent resource center services, and additional flexible training space to best serve the changing needs of the community. In fact, CITC is currently conducting a community needs survey in order to best identify and most intentionally meet the needs for childcare in the community, whether it's more zero-to-three or after-school programs or what, and we will be following that as we develop the project. We'd like to emphasize that this request to rezone to B3 is not only consistent with the community needs and desires, but also part of the previously approved 2040 Land Use Plan. We only request this expedited rezoning because COVID, delayed planning and zoning's implementation of the 2040 Land Use Plan, and these funds that we have available are available to us on a time-limited basis and our COVID relief funds. So therefore, the rezone to B3 is part of the plan, consistent with the plan and community need. It is supported by the neighbors, as evidenced by the Airport Heights Community Council Resolution on page 39 of your packet, and justified to be expedited by the one-time pandemic funds at CITC's disposal to develop this property now when the need is so great. Thank you for listening and considering this request. Peta and I are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. You have 5 minutes and 32 seconds remaining for rebuttal. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Seeing no questions in the queue, thank you for your time. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this matter?
Hi, yes, if it may please, the Planning and Zoning Commission, Niall Williams. I represent 1776 Alaska. When it comes to the rezone of any parcel of land within the municipality, until the complete census is completed from the federal government, I find it to be a conflict of interest to settle any rezoning issue. As well, the Planning and Zoning Commission is an unconstitutional organization of bureaucrats that are appointed. It is time that we, the people of Anchorage, reassert our value as the voters and the ones that really control what is going on within the municipality, and the fact that there is a bunch of unelected bureaucrats sitting up on there, on that dais, all of which are wearing face diapers. I pray to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that you have not taken that shot, and I pray that if you have taken that bioweapon, that it doesn't affect you in a negative way. Because that's the biggest thing. We need to stop the sleeves-up-for-summer program that's going on in that parking lot right out there. There's children, and their bodies are being exploited by a bioweapon from Communist China.
I want to remind those speaking in the public that you should speak to-
Can you please pause my time, Commissioner?
The item on the agenda, which is 2021-0087. So if you could keep your comments to the public hearing item, that would be helpful.
Again, through the Commissioner, we, the people of Anchorage, have not given you our sovereign authority to be able to dictate the planning and zoning desires of the citizens of Anchorage. It was unlawfully given to you, unconstitutionally, by a rogue assembly body and a rogue mayor. So any decisions that you make, any recommendations that you advise, are void. We ask right now that you resign today and that you decommission any of the signs that are within this building or your purview that advertise or coerce for the COVID-19 vaccine as a bioweapon to kill children and to make women so they can't hold babies in their uterus. And by the way, any planning and zoning, you must use the bathroom of the genitalia of your birth. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to make any testimony at this time? Seeing no one else wishing to make any testimony, turning back to the petitioner. You have 5 minutes and 32 seconds to rebut that. Your microphone was just turned off. Thank you.
Unless the Commissioners have any questions, I have nothing further to add.
All right, turning to the Commissioners. Do you have any questions for the petitioner? Seeing no questions, public hearing is closed on this item. Turning to the Commissioners, what is the will of the body? Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you, yes. In the matter of case 2021-0087, request for a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately 6.64 acres of land from I-1 and RO to B3, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Krishna, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Would anyone like to speak to that motion? Commissioner Krishna?
Sure, I'll just state for the record that I believe that all nine approval criteria have been met, and in particular, I would like to call out criteria 2, which is that the rezone complies with and conforms to the comprehensive plan, specifically that this rezone would implement one of the target area rezones described in the 2040 Land Use Plan, and also would support several of the goals, especially Goal 1, improving community resiliency and citizens' quality of life with this sort of, with this much-needed childcare development.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. Would anyone else like to speak to any of the items and make any findings at this time?
I will add that it will not result in a split-zone lot, and it actually will be fixing a split-zone lot between the I-1SL district and the RO-SL district. And that I believe it's not likely to result in significant adverse impacts, partially because of the L2 buffer landscaping, which is required. Anyone else wishing to make findings at this time? Seeing no one else in the queue, call for vote. And that motion passes. I'd like to thank the petitioner for their time. Before we close for the night, I would just like to add that for anyone who thinks I am an unelected bureaucrat, I am up for reappointment in October, and so you can speak to the Assembly about that and make your voice heard. Anyone else wishing to make a motion at this time, specifically to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.